Good morning, everyone. Happy New Year to everyone. We'll go ahead and start the meeting with the Pledge of Allegiance.
The Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Just a reminder to go ahead and silence your cell phones. Meeting documents are available for review down next to Commissioner Heiburger. And Carol is here this morning if you need a listening device. That takes us to routine business. First item is to consider a motion to approve the agenda.
Moved.
Second.
Motion in a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Next item is to approve meeting minutes from December 17th, 2019.
Motion to approve the minutes.
Second.
Motion in a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. It's amazing how long ago December 17th seems like it was, so. Next item are bills to be paid in the amount of $3,229,953.50.
Pay the bills.
Second.
Motion in a second. Any comments?
Madam Chair.
Commissioner Bar.
There are a few larger expenditures. We put $194,000 to E-911. We've got just under $400,000 spent in the Highway Department, $1.2 million going towards jail construction, and quite a number for Human Services and stuff with the rent and medical bills. I think I calculated at $370,000, so.
Commissioner Heiburger.
Just a comment about the medical bills, too. And if you look to the dates, some of those go back to, I'm gonna say, 2005, as we're cleaning up some of the stuff that has just been laying on the books. And so, the Human Services has been working hard to get some of that stuff cleaned up.
Madam Chair.
Commissioner Bar.
That's a good point by Commissioner Heiburger. And I think that we have, in the past, gotten bills from hospitals for, you know, from the distant past. And I think it's something the legislature could help us with by saying, if it's more than five years old, you can't give it to us. Anyway, that's.
Yeah, thank you. I know I had visited with Kerry Benz as well, and that they've been working and are somewhat optimistic they've got a better process in place to keeping those more current, so. All right, I had a motion in a second to pay the bills. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. There's a Minnehaha County Regional Juvenile Detention Center report from November there that I'd recommend for review. Those reports are full of lots of really good information. Next item is personnel actions. I'd consider a motion to approve routine personnel actions.
Motion to approve the action.
Second.
Motion in a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Next item are abatements. There are none. Item seven, notices and requests, there are none. Item eight, planning and zoning notices, there are none. Item nine is a petition for compromise of lien. Good morning, Melinda.
Good morning, Melinda Storey, Commission Office. The petitioner is in the process of selling her home and is scheduled to close on January 7th. However, she did discover that her former husband's lien is attached to the property at 6205 West Conranch Court. The lien represents poor relief, public defender and public advocate representation for the former husband from 2007 through 2018. There's a fee for $99.32 recorded in 1999 while they were married. That fee was paid by the petitioner on December 20th, 2019. The couple was divorced August 2005, approximately two years after the additional fees were added to the lien. The lien balance does appear to be the responsibility of the former husband. All the fees are related to his, to meet his needs. The action requested today by the petitioner is to compromise DPNO 40767 with no payment to release the lien only insofar as the real property legally described as Lot 7 and Block 4 of Silver Valley, in addition to the city of Sioux Falls, Minnehaha County, South Dakota, according to the reported plat thereof.
Thank you. Any questions for Melinda? Is there a motion? Commissioner Heiburger.
If there's no one here to speak, and I don't think there is, I'd make a motion to approve with no, with removing it from the home and leaving it according, on the person who incurred these costs. And I will mention, too, that that person has been making payments consistently this last year, so. That'd be my motion.
Second.
Motion in a second. Any other comments? All right, all in favor? A roll call vote, please, sorry.
Aye.
Benega?
Aye.
Heiburger?
Aye.
Karski?
Aye.
Bender? Aye. Motion passes unanimously. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Madam Chair.
Commissioner Bar.
I wonder if, as a point of information, we might tell our viewers that we're using a fixed camera position at our broadcast this morning, and so it won't be possible to watch all the action at the podium. Anyway, I just wanted to mention that.
Well, thank you. Yeah, it's a good point. The person who normally runs our camera is out ill today, and so we have a very good substitute, but we are just using that fixed camera position. So, thank you for bringing that up. That's a good reminder for those folks that are watching that might wonder why they're missing the podium today. All right, that takes us to opportunity for public comment. If there's anyone here who'd like to speak about something that's not on the agenda, this is your opportunity. All right, not seeing anybody rushing the podium. We'll go on to regular business. First item in regular business is an informational brief by the City of Sioux Falls Planning and Development Services Department on an application for a proposed establishment of Tax Increment Financing District Number 22. Dustin Powers, good morning.
Good morning, Commissioners. Dustin Powers with Sioux Falls Planning and Development Services Department. Today, I'm joined here with Jake Quasny with Lloyd Companies, and we'll be giving you the briefing today. As I'm sure many of you are aware, the city has received a tax increment financing application back in November from Lloyd Companies for the redevelopment of the Sioux Steel Site in downtown Sioux Falls. As is required by state statute, we have notified all of the taxing entities that are associated with property taxes in Minnehaha County. As we've practiced in recent years, the city, along with the developer, has been willing to come in front of those taxing entities to provide a direct presentation to you, to inform you of all of the information associated with that request. So, today, me and Jake will do that. What I'll have Jake do is I'll have him come up and present kind of the project requests, or project, and then the request for TIF that they're seeking. But just a couple items I wanted to present first is that this is still required to go in front of our Planning Commission and City Council for consideration. On Thursday, January 9th of 2020, is when the Planning Commission hearing is scheduled. So, that's next Thursday, not this Thursday, but next Thursday, and that's at 6:00 PM at Carnegie Town Hall. Following that, if the Commission, Planning Commission does approve it, there would be subsequent City Council hearings that would hear the, both the resolutions for the boundary in the district, as well as the development agreement associated with the project. The request is roughly for $21.5 million to support the construction of the parking ramp needed to support the density of the project that'll be presented here today. City staff sees that this is a great opportunity to support economic growth in our downtown, as well as our city, by supporting the redevelopment of the Sioux Steel Site. It's been a conversation about Sioux Steel and their future, as well as the redevelopment of the site for years. Our 2025 Downtown Plan calls out the redevelopment of that site. And so, when looking at this project, the city staff does see that the project, as well as the redevelopment and the use that's being proposed, is consistent with our 2025 Downtown Plan, as well as our 2040 Comprehensive Plan, and therefore, we will be bringing a recommendation of support to our Planning Commission on January 9th. So, what I'll do is I'll turn it over to Jake now. He'll go through the details of the project and their request, and then, after that, we'd be open to any questions that you guys would have.
Good morning, and thank you for giving us the opportunity to come and meet with you here today. We're very excited about this project. My name's Jake Quasny. I'm with Lloyd Companies, as Dustin said. When we sat down with the Rysdens and when we met with the community before we started this project, we were challenged to think about this, you know, not just in terms of 2020, but a hundred-year vision was really was laid out before us. And so, we believe we've created that and really done something that's worthy of the city's namesake. I mean, this is gonna be the backdrop of the fall, so we're very excited to bring it forward. As Dustin said, in order to do that, we do need that public-private partnership, and we've created, I think, the most cost-effective way of generating the type of density that this urban setting called for. All right, there we go. You've probably seen this. We certainly got a lot of coverage for it when we made it public, but this is the site plan, and what we really control is everything, the seven and a half acres north of that long light blue building labeled Future Development. That's a building that the Rysden family would like to see redeveloped in the future. It's a pretty iconic building there with the two-story clear building where they've stored their rolled steel for 100 years. But what we are proposing to do there is a 217-room canopy by Hilton Hotel, 60,000-square-foot convention center, 175,000-square-foot office tower with retail bars, office, commercial spaces on the ground level. And then, wrapping the parking garage, we've got apartments on the four floors above ground level retail, and then the opportunity to either have apartments or office on a future phase wrapping that parking garage. That parking garage is 930 stalls. The cost is approximately $24.9 million to do the whole thing. We've asked for contribution through a TIF with $21.5 million, with the developer taking on the risk, we're gonna go finance that TIF in order to do it. So, a quick summary of the pieces here. You can see this is the office tower in the background. It's a nine-story building. We've got a seven-story hotel, and then you have the convention center facing the river. We're also working in collaboration with the city to create additional park easements to create good connectivity to Kiwanis Park, which is kind of an unknown gem for the city right there at the top of the falls, but then the River Greenway right against it. This is that active urban commercial feel that we really wanna create. Throughout the development, we want walkability. The public said they wanted this to feel like something that they can, they're not looking over the fence into a development, and we've tried to create that with really walkable connectivity between Kiwanis Park, the River Greenway, the Levitt. I think it's a great opportunity to really engage the community with the development. You know, we looked at this site and trying to minimize what the expenses would be, what we would have to put into the TIF. We did look at doing underground parking. It's not really viable at this location, so in order to create that connectivity, we've connected it with a Skywalk that you can see there. And one thing I think is really important to the vision of this, when you look at these pictures and you think about a 930-stall parking garage right in the middle of the heart of a development like this, we wanna make sure it's aesthetically pleasing. And so, that building on the right of the image, that is the parking garage. That's what you'll see when you look at it from Phillips Avenue. And if you see that little black square sticking up at the top, that's the stair tower for the top level of the parking garage. So, we've really screened it. You're seeing this done in a lot of urban communities, and it is a much more cost-efficient way to develop that kind of parking and create the density we're talking about here. Looking at the individual buildings, that hotel convention center is gonna cost about $75 million for us to build out. The office is 43 and a half. That's just the shell, then we have the build-outs of the interiors. The parking ramp, like I said, it's $24.9 million. We're somewhere between 915 and 930 spaces, depending on, you know, the number of electric stalls and different pieces like that that end up in the final design. And then, the buildings wrapping that are approximately $40 million. As you can see here, the total project is $186 million. We have taken a long-term view of this project. We wanna incorporate a lot of cultural experiences tying into the sculpture walk and really making this a part of our downtown community and increasing the vibrancy. We are asking for the $21.5 million in TIF and a little over $1.1 million in bid that will be used for the promotion of the district. When we look at what we're paying, what they're paying today on the full 10 and a half acres, it's just under $57,000. When you project forward, we're showing a little over $2.5 million in 2040. The first year after we finished developments, actually, right around $1.6 million for just our portion of it. That does not include the three acres remaining that the Rysdens still have there. As far as the parking ramp goes, what our intention is, is really just to operate it very consistent with the public parking ramps. As far as nights and weekends will be free, there will be, you know, we're gonna have 100 apartments wrapping it, and we're gonna have the hotel that we need to make sure we've got parking available to those. But we've really designed it to where, at peak usage, we're about 120 stalls long. When you do all the analytics with parking experts, we're using Walker out of the cities to do that. Now, if there's 10,000 people at the Levitt, and I've got 800 people at a conference, my parking ramp's gonna be full, obviously, but I think that this, this is the sort of facility that we need in order to create density in our community. And to Dustin's point, we're just, we're here to answer any questions you might have.
Thank you. Are there questions this morning for Jake? Commissioner Heiburger. Is this a 20-year TIF?
Yes.
Other questions? Commissioner Benega?
Jake, or Dust, excuse me, swallowed something. With most of the parking ramps in the community, they're self-supporting with user fees and whatever. This would be a different component of generally the cost of constructing a parking lot. Can you talk a little bit about the financing of, we're looking at about 90% of the cost of the parking ramp being a TIF. Is that normal for that kind of an operation?
As far as the comparing it to how the city ramps were paid for, I guess I can't speak to that necessarily, but we have worked with Walker to maximize the revenue side of this, and that is the way that this one will play out.
Probably more of an appropriate question for Dustin. Excuse me.
Yeah, I think I, I think I have it understood. So, you know, traditionally, when we look at this, there's, there's kinda two different parking ramps in our downtown. One is gonna be a privately owned, or one is gonna be a publicly owned. Our public parking system is, like you described, we use user fees to support the entire system, not just individual ramps at, on their own. And so, whereas private market's a little bit different, they're not able to collect, you know, each person individually owns their own parking structure, and so they're not able to collectively use the user fees to then build new parking structures. You know, with this, obviously, they have user fees already projected into their pro forma here, and there's still a need to see the support for the TIF to fill the gap in that, to, to make the parking structure work. From a city standpoint, we see this as a, really, looking at this as an economic development incentive or grant for the TIF, in that it's, one, needed, the size and scale of this ramp is needed to support the density that they're proposing, which is desired by the city through our plans for downtown, but also that it, with the public aspect that they're willing to bring into this, that it'll be open, similar to how our parking structures are, then that provides the public the accessibility to the ramp, which goes to support what we're trying to accomplish in the area with the Levitt and the other activities that we're bringing forward. So, I think that answers your question, but.
It does. I just wanna say that I think that that piece of property has been in everybody's development focus for many, many years, and obviously, is part of the downtown redevelopment, if you will, of the whole area. It's an awesome project. There's no question about that. It's, I think it's gonna be difficult to put all those financial pieces together without us understanding some of those needs, if you will, but you've done a good job of explaining how that's working.
Commissioner Karski.
This is an informational briefing for the commission. You're not here for our approval. If you were, you'd have my full support. I think TIFs are just broadly misunderstood by a lot of people, and you, what you're paying is, you will continue to pay the increased property taxes. It just goes back into the public portion of the TIF, the parking. So, those taxes are gonna be paid, and once that TIF is paid off, then the full community gets, or the county and the city get the full property tax advantage. School district is made whole by the state fund, so this is just a wonderful project. You look at it, it's beautiful, the architectural renderings, I mean, it's, it's an amazing thing, and I hope that the city council moves forward with it, and I'd encourage them to do so. And again, this isn't a handout, in my perspective, this, because the taxes are gonna be paid back to the development to make this work, and I just encourage the support of it by everybody. Thank you.
Anything else? All right, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay, so that takes us to the next item, which is item 11. It's a public hearing to consider supplement requests for the 2019 annual budget. Vicki Hewitt, good morning.
Good morning, Commissioners. Vicki Hewitt from the Auditor's Office. We do have several general fund departments in need of supplements. The requests were summarized in the memo. They're for court systems, juvenile alternatives, and mental illness. The following budgets are needed to be supplemented. Courts commitment HSC for $30,000. Courts attorney fees for $75,000. Courts child defense attorneys for $250,000. And then, juvenile alternative shelter care, $120,000, and mental illness hospital for $35,000. So, those total $510,000. So, I'm here to answer any questions. Otherwise, memos were provided by the departments, and I believe there is at least one representative here if there are questions.
Okay, so this is a public hearing. Are there any proponents here of these budget requests that would like to speak? Is there anyone opposed who would like to speak? All right, I'm gonna turn it over to the Commissioners to see if they have any questions or like to.
Madam Chair.
Commissioner Bar.
It's been often said that government should be run like a business, but the courts systems, the juvenile issues, the mental illness, they're not big moneymakers for anybody, whether you're in business or in government. But it's our responsibility as government to take care of these things, and I think we will.
Commissioner Heiburger.
Just a comment on courts, and I'm not opposed to doing it, but when we go through our budget processes next year, for the last, since 2013, we've been falling below. And in 2018, our budgeted opposed to our actual spending, we were $234,000 plus more behind. And again, this year, we're $265,000, but yet we budgeted the same amount. And so, I don't remember what we did in the budget season that told us that we could, you know, we were at deficit spending in 2018, and then when we wrote our budget in 19, we still, we, we only went up by like $30,000, and I'm thinking if we were different, and I don't remember what we, what the discussion was at that time, but obviously, we need to look at the courts hard when we do them again this year, when we go through budgets, if we're ever consistently running behind over $200,000.
Well, I know the court administrators here, and I'd invite them to come forward, and I think it'd be an opportunity for us to have a conversation a little bit about where we've been historically in the court's budget and what we can do to do better.
Thank you, Commissioner Carl Taunus, Circuit Administrator for Lincoln and Minnehaha. I defer entirely to you, Madam Chair, as to what your pleasure is on how we, we do this. I can, I can hit the bullet points really quickly, or we can launch right into questions.
Maybe you could start with Commissioner Heiburger's question about why the budget, I mean, typically, we look to the different departments and areas to present a budget request, and, and so my recollection is that we basically passed what you've put forward, and so I'm just curious about that particular, that particular year, and then we can have a broader conversation.
Thank you. Generally, that's true, Commissioner. We've, we've submitted a budget, sort of a hopeful budget. If you recall, in the last few years, for example, the, the largest overrun is always court-appointed attorney expenses. It has been for years. And a couple of years ago, well, I think in 2016, 2017, for example, Judge Long, presiding judge at the time, convened a committee to try to look at ways to control those expenses, or at least moderate them. The county tried a number of attorney contracts, you know, fixed amount attorney contracts in involuntary commitment cases, abuse and neglect cases, and juvenile delinquency cases, and the results of those were, have sort of been mixed. Some of the attorneys found the workloads really challenging and opted to terminate the contracts under the provisions of the contracts. We ultimately chose not to continue with contracts in juvenile delinquency cases for a number of practical reasons. So, you're right, we, we've been struggling with that area. We file hopeful budgets every year. They, they probably don't correspond to the projections. But of course, the alternative is to give the Commissioners a budget that more closely matches what the projections are, and, and it's not entirely clear. The county frankly has the money every year to budget at that higher level, so, you know.
But I mean, if you don't have the money then, then you'd argue that we don't have the money now.
That's true.
So, I don't understand the whole hopeful, I mean, budgeting is budgeting, which is to put forward the most realistic projection of where you think you need to be, and then, at that time, if we don't think we can afford it, which is the time period where we're looking at, then we need to look at cuts or doing something. And so, coming back with a history since 2010 of budget deficits where you've had to come every single year and ask for supplements, doesn't work either, I don't think.
I agree, Commissioner. I agree. The alternative, though, as I said, is to file a budget recommendation that's very high. We defer to the commission on however you'd like us to construct the budget. We can certainly file one that's, that more closely matches what we think the actual projection should be.
Well, I think that's what every single other department does.
Yeah.
So, I'm not sure why you're, the courts would be an exception to that. I mean, I know that in 2016 to 17, we, we dramatically increased your budget with a hope to get more in line of where our expenses actually would be, and we still ended up with a deficit, but, you know, significantly less. In 2016, the deficit was $653,000 plus change, and the next year was $236,000. So, at least, you know, we, we made some progress. And I recognize you don't control your costs, it's, you know, and it is difficult. Court-appointed attorneys has been an ongoing struggle. Case load has been a struggle. But at the same time, I mean, I think our budgeting time is a time where we're looking at how many new positions can we afford? How many new vehicles can we afford? And we're trying to make that decision based on realistic expectations of where the budgets are actually gonna play, and, and that is the time that we're making those important decisions. So, to come with a supplement every single year defeats that process in some respects.
And it's, I can tell you, it's a process that the, the presiding judge and I don't enjoy at all. If you, if we do look back, though, there have been a number of years where the, where, I think a couple of years ago, for example, I drafted the budget recommendation as an alternative. This is our projection, and this is the budget, and the commission chose to adopt the existing budget. As Commissioner Heiburger points out, there, there were three years, I think, there where the budgets stayed flat.
Yeah.
When the court and, and our recommendation, and probably the commission itself, knew, knew pretty confidently it was not gonna be flat. The expenses were not gonna be flat. But the, the commission chose to do that at the time. So, I think we are sort of, I don't wanna say trapped. We've established this habit of, of what I call those hopeful budget projections, when I think realistically, we're all pretty confident that, given the growth of the caseload and the population, we, we know it's not gonna be flat.
Well, I, I just think personally that what we need to do is try to be realistic during the budget process, and that involves a deep dive and difficult, you know, work during that budgeting process, and that, you know, we try to do better going forward. I'm, I'm certainly in support of this supplement. I mean, we recognize that these were actual costs that were incurred, but sometimes it just feels like there's a blank check kind of mentality when it comes to court costs, and. And I think that, you know, we need to continue to look to see what kind of solutions are out there to try to get a handle on some of these costs.
If I could, Commissioner, the only, the only last point I'd make is, I think part of the difficulty with trying to draft or determine a court's budget or predict a court's budget is the volatility. You know, depending on, on the number of murders, depending on the, the severity of the cases, depending on how many children are removed from their homes, for example, over the course of a year, is gonna have a substantial effect on what the, the final actuals are. And that one year where the overrun was somewhere around $600,000, the worst year of all in recent years. I think that's, that's a good example of the volatility that the Commission and the courts struggle with every year, is trying to predict, okay, what are the capital cases going to be? How many children are gonna be removed? Those sorts, so I think this is, not only are, are the costs sort of mandatory, in some sense, the county has stuck with them, but the, the...
That's not really an attitude that I embrace.
Right.
So I think we're never stuck with anything, we can always do better.
Right, and I think the court is very open to, to trying to be as flexible and open-minded and, and as we possibly can on trying new approaches, like the contracting.
And I, I mean, and I just think that, as a county, we have all aspects of those court costs. We have the state's attorney, we have public defender's office, public advocate's office. I mean, we, we have the whole, the whole enchilada, I was trying to think of it. And so, and in, in other areas who have struggled, that, you know, have a piece of that with their budget, they have done better. And, you know, we've, we've, have very few budget supplements actually this year. From, and so there are departments that have been here historically that are not here this year. And so I think we can do better, and that's, that would be my goal for 2020.
And, and I can say, Commissioner, to be perfectly honest, that would be a great relief. Because we go through this process every year, which always seems, I'm not sure quite how to put it, sort of contrived. In the, in the past, you know, the Commissioners, I'm sure, are pretty confident, given the growth, that the budget's not gonna be flat, and, and my...
But we look to you to provide that budget, Carl. So that's what, that's what we need from you, from your department.
I'd be happy to, Commissioner, and I really appreciate this discussion. Because I think if we took a new approach in future years, it would sort of get us out of that process. And it'd be a much healthier, more clear-eyed way to do it.
Commissioner Heiburger.
I have one more question. On the HS commit, HSC commitments, there were some comments about that, about the way that the, the money flows in that. And if you could just speak a little bit about that, because of differences in how we're looking at it and how our contracted help is looking at it. So just where would that money go? And if you'd just explain a little bit, because obviously, I'm not explaining it well, if no one else knows what I just read, or that I read yesterday.
Sure. We're in a situation now, I believe, where the, the County Board of Mental Illness believes that costs of commitment to HSC, while an individual is awaiting restoration to competency, should come out of the court's budget. In the past, the costs of the residency while the defendant was being evaluated was the only portion that came out of the court's budget. That's why there's a line item in the court's county budget for HSC. Typically, those took two or three days. And that came out of the court's budget, and, and it was generally within budget each year. Some years ago, the, the Board and Jim Ostie, and if he were here, he, he and I would look at each other now and smile, and we would nod, because the, the Board and the court, I think, have a difference in opinion as to how those costs should be paid. I think the county is on the hook either way. Costs of commitment for county residents are the responsibility of the, of the county of residents. So I think it, it's a county expense either way. Over the last few years, the county has chosen, or the County Board of Mental Illness sends the Auditor's Office a list of all the committees and the, the costs of residency at HSC under the commitments, and says, this is the court's, this is the court's, this is the court's. If they're there long after the evaluation is done, if they're there for a long-term commitment at HSC pending restoration to competency, which can take years, then the, the Board feels it should come out of the court's county budget. Ultimately, it's all a county expense. So it's, you know, we defer entirely to the Commissioners as to where you wanna take that money from to pay those bills. Currently, it's coming out of the court's county's, court's county budget. That's the, the preference or the position of the Board, and ultimately up to you.
Commissioner Heiburger.
A follow-up question on that. Where did the money come from before? I mean, you're right, it's always county money, and you know, you can see as the costs go up. But where was, where was that housing money coming from? Was it coming from, I don't know, where was it coming from before we switched?
I assume it was coming from the Board's budget, Commissioner, but I, I don't know for sure either. Because since it wasn't coming out of the court's county budget in, in past years, I never saw them. You know, it's, it's maybe good that we're having this discussion now, because I happen, as Carol knows, I happened to get a call from HSC a couple of days ago, someone in the accounting office. There's a, an individual, a Minnehaha County resident at HSC now, awaiting restoration to competency. He's been there two years and needs major surgery. So HSC wants to know, okay, where to send the bill. You know, as far as I know, the, the court's county budget has never paid a medical expense, ever. But under the Board's rationale, if, if associated expenses for an individual at HSC awaiting restoration to competency comes out of the court's county budget, I can see why HSC now thinks, well, then the court ought to pay for that surgery. And, and so I think a, a resolution would be helpful.
Commissioner Heiburger.
I think you're right, I mean, this is probably not the place to dig into all this. And so we need to come up with a deeper dive and figure out exactly where we wanna do, because either we need to bump this court things, but there need some guidelines about where our medical expenses going to be, fall. And yes, we're going to end up having to pay it all, but where does it fall in the budgeting process? So somebody knows where to put the budget money.
I think you're exactly right, Commissioner, and you're right about the deeper dive too, because I know it gets terribly complex.
Yeah, thank you.
And I think Carl is right, because I remember visiting with Jim Ostie about it. It used to come out of the Board of Mental Health budget. And there's some differences of opinion about who, you know, that's a game that we all play. Commissioner Barth.
Thank you. I think Commissioner Bender, you're exactly right about the blank check aspect of this. And it's been like this most of my years here. And we are a thrifty group. And so when we do the budget, we cut it pretty close. We don't over-guesstimate what those expenses will be. And I guess my worry, Carl, would be is if we gave you an extra 400 grand every year, that you'd still be 400 grand short. And that's the problem with, with finding, with over-financing you. And I, you know, I hate to, you know, go on short leash, thinking you've got a lot of money in your pocket. We can do a better job of actually picking the number instead of trying to be as conservative as we are doing the budget. But we, we also need you to squeeze every nickel before you spend it. And thank you.
All right, anyone else? Commissioner Benega.
Well, unfortunately, I agree with all the comments, or fortunately. But the bottom line is we have no choice at this point in time, and we need to approve what we have here. This is 2019 general funding. We need to take care of that today. It's less than 1% of our budget, but that's why we strain by going through budgeting processes every year. And I think we need to remember this conversation when we do it in June. And thank God we have a wide lens today, because then Jeff can reach me. But more importantly, I would make a motion that we supplement the request of the... Do we have to do it individually, or can we...
We can do one supplement for the court system's supplements, the juvenile alternative supplements, and the mental illness supplement.
That three motions?
Yes, it is.
There's a motion, is there a second?
Second.
Motion and a second. Any further discussion? Roll call vote, please.
Benega.
Aye.
Heiburger.
Aye.
Karski.
Aye.
Barth.
Aye.
Bender.
Aye. Motion passes unanimously. Thank you for coming over this morning.
Carl.
Can I make another comment?
I think so.
You know, every year, we do end up dealing with something like this. But I don't know that the legislature understands some of the comments that were made by the court system. I mean, the legislators are not really in tune to Minnehaha County's responsibility, and I'm assuming some of Pennington County's responsibility of the difference between what we're facing as normal business activity versus the rest of the state. They just tell us to figure it out. Well, then they put limits on how we're supposed to figure it out. I mean, there, this is not gonna go away, and I've said this before, but this is gonna be a train wreck unless somebody starts recognizing the fact that we have different problems in a larger county than we do in the rest of the state. And I think it's time to bring that up again, and don't let it go away.
Commissioner Heiburger.
And it comes back to local control of the counties and giving us more options of what we're doing with the money. And we continue to work on those options legislatively, but we need the ear of legislators. And I mean, they're giving us the ear, but we don't necessarily always get the votes. Because if you don't give us the tools, if they don't wanna use it in Jones County, fine. But sometimes in the bigger counties, we need more options. That's why they're called options.
And I guess I, I just can add, all five of these issues are related, related to public safety. And what's a bigger priority to the, the state than that?
All right, those are all good comments. And I know we have a bill that we're bringing forth this legislative session to address local control and provide us some options to deal with public safety costs, so. All right, thank you all for that conversation. That takes us to item 12, which is to consider a motion to authorize the following 2019 budget supplements using grants, donations, and reimbursements. First up is the Sheriff's Office from various Department Revenue ASNs to various Department Expenditure ASNs. Good morning, Joe, how are you?
Good morning, Commissioners. Joe Bosman with the Sheriff's Office. We'll be discussing this morning any supplements for the Sheriff's Office budget, as well as the jail budget, and also emergency management, which is next on the list to cover as well. The list of stuff that you have in front of you is reimbursements that we have received throughout the year, unbudgeted revenues that were from either grants or insurance payments, different sort of reimbursements from the state for different projects that we have dealings with. And so what this is, is we're just asking for these specific dollar amounts to be moved from the revenue accounts into the expense accounts to offset the expenses that were reimbursed.
All right, are there any questions for Joe?
Motion to approve the Sheriff's Office various Department ASNs.
Second.
Motion and a second. Any further comments or questions? If not, roll call vote, please.
Heiburger.
Aye.
Karski.
Aye.
Barth.
Aye.
Benega.
Aye.
Bender.
Aye. Motion passes unanimously. So the next item is the Emergency Management from various Department Revenue ASNs to various Department Expenditure ASNs.
Similar along the same lines, the Office of Emergency Management from Minnehaha County is the fiduciary, you could say, for the highway, or excuse me, the Homeland Security Grant. So any things, any funds that are coming from the state that are for spending with law enforcement, fire departments through that sort of grant program are purchased through the Office of Emergency Management here and then reimbursed by the state. So that's where the expenditures, you'll see, are coming out of the emergency management, but they are reimbursed from the state.
Any questions? No, I entertain a motion.
Motion to approve the budget supplement for Emergency Management.
Second.
Motion and a second. Roll call vote, please.
Karski.
Aye.
Barth.
Aye.
Benega.
Aye.
Heiburger.
Aye.
Bender.
Aye. Motion passes unanimously.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. So the next item is item C, which has two parts to it, I believe, and Vicki Hewitt.
Yes, Vicki Hewitt from the Auditor's Office. Yes, we need two motions for supplements from the general, the first one from the general fund to the general fund budgets of, again, for grants, donations, and other reimbursements in the Commission Office, pre-trial services, human services, safe home, and juvenile alternatives.
Questions? If not, I entertain a motion.
Move approval. Second.
Yeah, this is on the first one, on the items that you just, that you just last listed for the general fund. Okay, so there's a motion and a second. Any comments, questions? Roll call vote, please.
Barth.
Aye.
Benega.
Aye.
Heiburger.
Aye.
Karski.
Aye.
Bender.
Aye. Motion passes unanimously.
Okay, and the second motion is to supplement from the pass-through grants fund to the pass-through grants budget for the ICWA grant, which awards to provide expert witness services in the amount of $109,900.
Motion to approve the pass-through funds grant.
Second.
Motion and a second. Roll call vote, please.
Benega.
Aye.
Heiburger.
Aye.
Aye.
Sorry. Karski.
Aye.
Barth.
Aye.
Bender.
Aye. Motion passes unanimously. Thank you. All right. Next item is we're beginning our, actually, our 2020 presentations from various entities that we fund. And today, we have a presentation from InterLakes Community Action Partnership. Cindy Danabring, good morning.
Good morning. I'm Cindy Danabring, Executive Director of InterLakes Community Action. And I appreciate the opportunity to come and visit with you all today. With me, I have Bonnie Duffy. Bonnie is Vice Chair of our Board of Directors. And Tammy Denning, who oversees the services that ICAB offers in this area. As included in your handouts is a list of all of the services that we've provided in this year, which is August of 18 through July of 19, in Minnehaha County. InterLakes Community Action serves 14 counties in Eastern and South Dakota. And this list you see for Minnehaha County is very much different than what you would see when I go and visit with Hamlin County Commissioners, or Kingsbury County Commissioners, or Brookings, or any of the other counties that we serve. InterLakes Community Action serves the unmet needs of the community. We are here not to duplicate, but we're here to fill gaps and to expand on services that are here if there's a need. The poverty's numbers for Minnehaha County have gone down over the, this three-year period from 2015 to 2018, which is a good thing, of course. And I think we kind of see that. It doesn't mean that there aren't low-income people here, it's just there's, there's a few fewer. There's still 17,359 persons who fall into the poverty range in Minnehaha County. So as we look at the services that we have provided, I, I'm not going to read this to you, but I'll just highlight a few things. Weatherization, weatherization funding has been cut significantly in the federal budget. Weatherization money comes down through DOE, and that Department of Energy, and that has been, been cut. We certainly aren't serving all of the needs in Minnehaha County. We're serving 20 houses for weatherization. We have a, a long list, and that's just through word of mouth. We don't advertise this program, because there's not enough money there to, to develop such a huge list that is, you know, people would say, why did you even advertise when there's no hope of us being weatherized? There are some additional furnace dollars, though. And as you see, we've been able to replace or repair 37 furnaces in that year. And every year is about that same number. We do early Head Start services in the Sioux Falls office. We have an early childhood development center. So we serve 64 children there. We also do some home-based services. Head Start, we work in partnership with the Baltic School District and the Gerstens School District. And Head Start Performance Standards are operated in those two schools in their preschool program. And we have some Head Start children in those classrooms. Volunteer income tax assistance. This is a relatively new program here. We haven't done it that many years. But there's getting to be more and more people that are coming to us for this assistance. We train volunteers to do income tax assistance. And low-income people then can come to us, and we will do their income taxes for them free of charge. Universities send students to be trained out of their accounting departments. It's kind of a win-win for them. They get some hands-on experience, and our families get assistance, free assistance with completing their income taxes. One of the, the major programs that we do here is serving homeless families with children. We have, right now, we have six coaches who provide case management services. They serve about 150 families with children. We have three different funding sources for that, including the, the city of Sioux... of Sioux Falls has a program, and the other fundings are through HUD. Through those programs, we can offer case management, as I said, which is, in my opinion, the most vital part of it. It also offers tenant-based rental assistance. So, in the past, as you know, we had Heartland House. We still have a program called Heartland House, but we don't have a facility that's entitled Heartland House. We used to have Heartland House 1, if you remember, and we had Heartland House 2. We had two different locations. HUD decided that it was a better option, and I'm not sure if, if they were wrong, to be honest, in our, our experience with this now, to put the people out in the community and have them, them blend in. In the, the old way, when people were finished with the Heartland House program, they had to move. The new way, when they have completed the Heartland House or Bright Futures or ESG programs, they can stay in that place. They don't have to uproot their families and figure out schools and, and whatever else they would have to do. And all of those moving expenses, now they can stay there. Our goal, of course, is for them to be able to pay the full cost of their rent without the tenant-based rental assistance. We can pay up to two years, but we never do. It's very seldom that we pay up to two years, because the goal, when they come into any of these programs, is to go out of those programs. So our coaches start right from the beginning, looking at what do you need to do to be self-sufficient. And of course, they have to get a job, and there's some rules around that as well. There's, there's a waiting list. There's, continues to be a waiting list for this program, and it's still a very difficult program for people. There's accountability still built into it, even though we're not in that, that agency-owned facility. So that's, that's the, the major program we're doing. The last thing on the list is about Dakota Dreams, and we're running out of money in that program, but we've been able to help those six families purchase homes. And a few of them have been Habitat families. How that one works is we receive some match money through South Dakota Housing and from the federal government, and the family saves up to $2,000, and then that can be matched with these other funds. So they end up with a down payment of $6,000 to $8,000 to put toward that house. But it's to get them to develop these saving skills, which can carry then through the, their lives. So, I think that's what I have for you today. Don't want to take a lot of your time. Do you have any questions?
Commissioner Barth.
So, thanks for being here, Cindy. Can you tell us more about the plan for the Heartland House fundraiser, I believe in February, right?
Yep. On February 13th is the Heartland House fundraiser. It's a casual event. It's late in the afternoon. Tammy, 5 to 7, is that about what the event is? We do hors d'oeuvres. We honor one of the graduates of the Heartland House program with, that person is there, with their family perhaps. We do a video of their story, what, how they came to us and their situation when they came to us, and now how they have become a success. Heartland House, though it, we receive federal money, there's a required, requirement of match dollars. So this is a way that we can raise match dollars. Really appreciate your, your support. Some of you have been at the event, and it's, really appreciate that. Jeff is very involved in the event as well.
If I may, what, what are the ways that people can contribute to, to Heartland House? There, there's sponsorships, there's tables.
There's tables, yes. There's Tammy or Bonnie. Both of these folks worked much closer with the fundraising of the event. A table, the minimum cost of a table is 600, and that's a lot of, of businesses and organizations will purchase a table for $600. Then there's, and it goes up to $5,000 is a major sponsor, and we have two right now, major sponsors. We could potentially have three. But then there's different levels in between that people can do, and different amounts of, not really benefit, but advertising perhaps, because we have pictures and slides showing throughout the event, and the sponsors will be recognized on those. They will be recognized at the podium from our, our MC. So, that's kind of how that works.
Commissioner, this body will get a table, and we will not be using taxpayer money.
Thank you very much. We also have a dessert auction, and members of the committee, Jeff Barth is also a part of the committee, that go out and recruit donated desserts. And then those desserts are auctioned, as well as maybe some tickets at the pavilion or at the...
The Vikings Super Bowl game.
So that's, that's a lot of fun, that auctioning off of the desserts. So appreciate that, Jeff, and your help with that.
Anything else?
One other thing I could mention is that we have, in the past, as I mentioned, Heartland House 1, 2. Heartland House 1, we actually sold that property. Heartland House 2, we received some tax credit money and did a complete renovation of that property, and now it is rented out. This year, we have applied for additional tax credit projects and will be the developer of a 46-unit townhouse project, low-income housing. The rents will be below fair market rent, which is very difficult to do, but it, it's why we're, we're in this, is to try to have a safe, secure place for our families to live. Our families is a broad statement, and, because I'm not just talking about our Heartland House families or Bright Futures families, it's low-income families in this community need a place to live. This property is next to a high school, next to a grade school, and next to a library. It's a great location, so I'm very excited about that prospect.
Commissioner Benega.
She just answered my question.
And your clairvoyance, so. Anything else? Well, we, we really appreciate all the work that you guys do, helping the citizens of Minnehaha County and surrounding counties. So thank you for taking the time to be with us this morning.
You.
Thank you. Okay, that takes us to item 14, which is to consider a motion to approve and authorize the chair to sign Highway Construction Change Order for Project MC-16-02. DJ Boothie, good morning.
Morning, Commissioners. DJ Boothie, Highway Superintendent. Every time we do a bridge reconstruction project, we try to do enough geotechnical work or, or site investigation to know exactly what we're getting into when we're removing an old structure or digging into existing soils. One of the things that we look for is old bridge abutments, and in the case of a bridge that we removed here in November, we found two bridge abutments instead of one. And so the work that was expected of the contractor was definitely above and beyond the original scope of the project, and he's proposed, or we've negotiated with him, a, a contract change order for the removal of the existing debris from the previously installed bridge for $47,300. It's a lump sum agreement for the change order, and it adds 10 working days to this phase of the project. And so I'll stand by for any questions. Otherwise, I ask for your approval of this change order, so they're able to complete the removal and continue working on the bridge.
Any questions for DJ?
Move approval.
Second.
Motion in a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. I think you have a whole slew of them here for us this morning, DJ. So item 15, consider a motion to approve and authorize chair to sign Highway Construction Change Order for Project MC-18-05.
Commissioners, almost every time we have a crack seal project, we come to you with a change order request, either a, a big increase or a big decrease, estimating the amount of crack seal material to be placed out on, on a, a roadway is, is very arbitrary. We use past estimates, and we try to look at how many cracks we have on an existing roadway. But until the spring thaw happens and we see how big those cracks and how many cracks there are, we really have no idea how much mass, or how much crack seal material there is going to be. And so, in the case of this contract, we had nine miles remaining on a, on a portion of roadway that still needed to be sealed and leveled. We also had a section that had failed and that had been inspected. We felt confident that the contractor had done the appropriate work. It wasn't their fault necessarily. And so we agreed to do some removals on the failed work and then had them complete the, the work again. And so what that ended up being is an additional $97,011.65 in total cost, and so we're proposing a contract change order for $97,000, and that will allow us to close out this contract. If you have any questions, I will stand by.
Commissioner Karski.
Confused, DJ. I'm trying to follow the money. So the 97 is what we're paying the contractor to do the additional work, not the amount that it costs the county to do the work, the Highway Department to do the work?
Right. The, well, that's the net. And so there was actually $102,000, or, there was about $102,000 worth of additional work and, and, and rework, and we were credited $5,244 for removing the work ourselves.
For, okay. So that's where the credit is coming from. It's not for the full $97,000.
Right.
Okay, okay.
Other questions? If not, I'd entertain a motion.
Motion to approve?
Second.
In a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Next item is to authorize the chair to sign a professional services agreement with Civil Design, Inc., for Construction Administration of Highway Project MC-1810. DJ.
Commissioners, on November 1st, we had a bid opening for two box culvert projects, or two structure projects, and Knoll's Dragline was the winning contractor, winning bidder for that. We awarded them a contract for just under $500,000 earlier this year. And so since then, we've negotiated a construction administration agreement with Civil Design, Inc. out of Brookings. They were also the design engineer on this contract, or on this project. And so we've negotiated a construction admin agreement for $78,774. And we'll stand by for any questions. Otherwise, would ask you to sign that agreement, so we can have them oversee the construction project for us.
Commissioner Heiburger.
Just a comment. As you can see at the end of his memo, that this is a project for November 2020 for completion date, and then just that the proactively working on bids now, while the prices are cheaper and get them on people's lists for the summer, actually, this will probably be late fall, whatever, but it's good to see that we're that far ahead. So I'd make a motion to approve.
Second.
Motion in a second. Any other questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. That takes us to item 17, which is to consider a motion to approve and authorize the chair to sign purchase agreements for nine land parcels to acquire right-of-way for construction of Highway 149.
Commissioners, in 2021 or 2022, we're going to plan on reconstructing County Highway 149 from County Highway 122 north to Colton, and we have been actively working on some preliminary design, final design, and, and right-of-way purchases to get the full 100-foot right-of-way corridor through that section. And we have before you today nine different parcels. It, it's two different property owners, but they have nine collective parcels together, and we wish you to, or we are asking you to execute the right-of-way purchase agreements with those parcels. The total cost is just under $24,000 for purchasing this right-of-way.
Questions? Commissioner Barth.
DJ, does, does this conclude the need for additional parcels on this project, or are there still more?
It, it does not conclude the need. We're just starting here this summer, working on this, and so we're actively, but not, this isn't our number-one priority for right-of-way negotiations right now, but we are actively working on it. We sent out letters just one time so far.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Go ahead.
Move for approval. Second.
Motion in a second. Any other comments, questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Item 18, consider a bid award recommendation and authorize the chair to sign an agreement between Minnehaha County and Midwest Contracting for Project MC-1807. DJ.
Commissioners, on December 18th, we had a bid opening for a project that includes two, two culvert crossings on County Highway 110, just west of I-29. And much like Commissioner Heiburger was mentioning earlier, we're trying to get our bids completed as soon as possible in the bidding season in order to get good bids. This is a pretty great example of that. We received six bids for this culvert project, and the consultant's estimate, cost estimate was just over $426,000. The winning bidder was Midwest Contracting, who we had on a large culvert replacement project in 2019. They did an excellent job. Their, their bid was $371,309, so about $50,000 or so less than the cost estimate, which is over 10% less than the cost estimate. So we're asking for your approval of that contract, so we can move forward with getting that scheduled for the construction season.
Questions?
Move for approval. Second.
Motion in a second. Roll call vote, please.
Heiburger. Karski.
Aye.
Barth.
Aye.
Benega.
Aye.
Bender.
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously. Next item is item 19, to authorize the Highway Department to purchase a 2019 Chevrolet Colorado through Sourcewell contract. DJ.
Commissioners, as part of our regular vehicle replacement program, we're requesting this purchase of a 2019 Chevy Colorado pickup through the Sourcewell contract, which used to be the NJPA contract, and this will go to our operations manager, his existing pickup. Will go to more than likely one of the team leaders on our, on our maintenance team, and kind of a trickle-down effect with the pickups. And an old pickup that will be replaced is 2008 Ford F-250 Extended Cab. And so the cost of this is $39,516.44, and we are requesting your approval of this purchase.
Questions, comments?
On this?
Second.
Motion in a second. Any other comments or questions? All right, roll call vote, please.
Karski.
Aye.
Barth.
Aye.
Benega.
Aye.
Heiburger.
Aye.
Bender.
Aye. Motion passes unanimously. Next item is to authorize, oh, thank you.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
Wonder if we could get the Highway Superintendent to comment on the recent snow removal and current conditions?
Sure. Right now it's fine. Thank you.
Commissioners, again, we had a, I haven't given a great snow update for a while. We had a snow event over the weekend, and much like the last one, this one started off with some rain and some temperatures that just kind of floated around the 32-degree mark. And so that's always kind of a nuisance for us. We had people out checking on the roads all, most of the day on Saturday, just kind of waiting to see if it was going to turn to snow, or if we started to receive any kind of trouble spots. We ended up not having many issues at all on Saturday. Sent people out on Sunday for about eight hours and just kind of fought with the, the slush and the refreezing that we were experiencing. We were able to put down some salt on Sunday and, and get the roads pretty cleared up by the end of the day, but then it got cold overnight on Sunday night. And so Monday, we really struggled a lot with dealing with ice, and, and we weren't able to put down a bunch of chemicals on Monday because we had 30 mile an hour winds. And if we had put down a bunch of chemical or sand, then we would be dealing with a whole bunch of debris and stuff sticking to the road. So yesterday was a little bit rough. By the end of the day, most of the stuff was just blowing over the road instead of sticking to the road, and so they were slick, but they weren't terrible if you drove the conditions. But we were out again at 4 o'clock this morning, and, and the roads seemed to be clearing up pretty good. The northwest part of the county, as per usual, is, is where we're seeing issues the most, by Colton. I know that there was a fatal accident on I-29 this morning. They were having a lot of black ice. We see, we saw some areas with black ice, but most of our problems was heavy drifting, like in the treat areas on the highways.
Commissioner Heiburger.
Just a comment. So maybe you could comment a little bit, DJ, about, I've seen several people who have pushed the snow out of their driveways, and they just push it across and dump it in the ditch, and then I've also seen driveways where they're piling them up on the edge of their driveway, right on the edge of the highway, and concerns about it drifting over, especially in shelter-belted areas. But anyway, could you just comment on about a couple of those issues?
Sure. That's a, that's a good couple of points to make. So there is a county ordinance that prevents, or that is supposed to prevent people from pushing snow out of their driveway, across the roadway, or even out of their driveway, onto the public right-of-way, next to their driveway. to their driveway, and it creates two issues. When they push it across the road, just that that pushing action over the roadway creates a slick spot, an icy spot usually, where people are that are driving down the road, they can hit that and they can lose control, and so that's why we we want to prevent that from happening. And then when they push it either around their driveway or off their driveway, right by their driveway approach, that just small little hill of 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 snow or large hilt of snow, whether it's a lot of snow or little snow, can create additional drifting that goes out onto the roadway, which is a kind of a maintenance nightmare for for our guys. And then anything that they push up near the roadway, just off the shoulder, our wing blades are are usually ten feet long, and so from the driving lane, our blades go out ten feet into the ditch, and if they're pushing snow out there, that is a thicker density than the the regular snow that just falls into the ditch, and when our wing blades hit that, it's it's a hard hardened snow that can make our wing fly up and hit the truck. It can break our equipment. It can it can cause that snowplow truck to go into the ditch, to lose control and go into the ditch and cause further damage or even put our drivers at harm. So we just want to make sure that people aren't doing that. If any of our drivers see that happening, they usually take a picture, send it into our operations manager, and they call the law enforcement. Although they'll try to stop personally, the operations manager will, but more often than not, it ends up being a law enforcement issue.
Thank you. Anything else? We certainly appreciate all the work that your crew does to keep us all safe, so thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay, so that takes us to item twenty, which is to sign the twenty-twenty coroner-slash-medical-examiner agreement between Minnehaha County and Dr. Snell slash Sanford Health. Hi, Craig.
Morning. Craig Dewey, Commission Office. You've got a couple of contracts before you today. The first one is the coroner and medical examiner contract. I'd just like to take a moment and acknowledge the state's attorneys, the civil attorneys in the office. They review a lot of contracts, not only for the Commission Office, but other departments as well, and so thank you, Maggie, and the rest of the team for reviewing the number of contracts that we had going through here at the end of the year. So the county has a contract for services for coroner and medical examiner with Dr. Kenneth Snell, and this is another contract, again, for renewal for twenty-twenty. The expenses for coroner and medical examiner are separated out, as you can see in the memo. The coroner expenses are seventy-two thousand dollars per year. The medical examiner expenses are two hundred thirty thousand one hundred sixty-eight dollars and seventy-six cents, and then we have an expense estimate for twenty-eighteen budget. Some of that is undetermined yet because of we don't know how many decedent transports will take place, as one example. It's also worth pointing out that expenses for the twenty-twenty contract for the medical examiner are thankfully ten thousand dollars lower than during twenty-nineteen due to some cost savings. So the total amount for this contract is three hundred seventy-one thousand dollars, three hundred seventy-one thousand twenty-seven dollars, and would be happy to answer any questions and would request your approval for this twenty-twenty contract.
Any questions? If not, I'd entertain a motion.
Make a motion to approve. Second.
Motion in a second. Commissioner Barth?
I just want to say we're pretty lucky to have Dr. Snell working for us, and there's a shortage of forensic pathologists nationwide, and many counties, communities don't even have a pathologist acting as their medical examiner, and Dr. Snell's predecessor said that across the state of South Dakota, that there are probably criminal murders that occur undiscovered because they're not examined by a professional. We're lucky to have Dr. Snell.
I don't disagree. All right, so you have a motion in a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Takes us to item twenty-one, which is to authorize the chair to sign the twenty-twenty ambulance quality assurance director agreement for rural ambulance services between Minnehaha County and Dr. Jeff Luther.
Good morning. Craig Dewey, Commission Office, again. This contract is for rural ambulance service delivery quality assurance. Dr. Jeff Luther has been the holder of this contract for a number of years. He provides a very valuable service to the county, and we really appreciate the partnership that he has with the county and emergency management in this. The total budget remains the same in twenty-twenty as it did in twenty-nineteen. It is thirty thousand dollars, and that is paid in twelve equal installments. Would be happy to answer any questions and then would request your approval for the twenty-twenty contract, please.
Any questions?
Motion to approve?
Second.
Motion in a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
That takes us to item twenty-two, liaison reports. Are there any liaison reports today? Christmas week, I'm not surprised there are no liaison reports. Item twenty-three, new business. Are there any items of new business today? Item twenty-four, old business. Any old business? Hearing none, I'd entertain a motion to recess the Minnehaha County Commission meeting.
Motion to recess. Second.
In a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. We will take about a ten-minute break, and then we will reconvene. Thank you.